Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Before we stand for the pledge this evening, I would just like to make a brief announcement for our community. This past Monday, the Richmond Community Schools lost one of its students, Nathan Actum, an 11th grader at Richmond High School, who passed away after a long battle with cancer. Our condolences go out to the family and friends of Nathan during this time of loss and grief. At this time, please join the board and I for a moment of silence in honor of Nathan. A memorial service for Nathan will be held at Katz Funeral Home in Richmond on October 1st from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. It is open to all who wish to pay their respects. Again, our thoughts and prayers go out to the family during this time of loss and grief. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angela, you can place to our mission statement.
Yes. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Deb? Here.
Sherri is absent with notice. Danielle is absent with notice. Candace?
Here.
Sandra?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I am present. You have a call.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for our consent agenda?
So moved.
Go ahead. Okay, wait a minute. Someone give me a first.
Angela?
Who was it? I said first, not who's first.
There wasn't a first. Or did you say so moved?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I need a second.
Support.
Thank you. Sorry, ladies.
It's okay.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Walmsley?
We had a couple resignations since our last board meeting. Jessica Sutton, a paraprofessional resigned. Mr. Bartels will be taking a position in another district as principal. His last day will be this Friday, September 30. We have some new hires. Samantha Franz, our theater and musical assistant director. Colleen Kilpatrick, our PM custodian. Glenda Nowak Owens, our lawn supervisor. The science teacher referenced in your packet, I am meeting with her tomorrow, so we will have that official after meeting with her tomorrow. Miranda Zegaki, GSRP associate teacher. There's a couple of appointments for the scheduled positions, as you see in your backup packet. Mr. Delora is both freshman and sophomore class advisor. Mrs. Laratanda is the health and wellness chair for the high school. Mr. Reneer is March of Reading Month, the green school club coordinator. Mr. Rubin is a senior class sponsor. Mrs. Shagna is the junior class sponsor. And Mrs. Walters at the elementary school is a scheduled advisor. I apologize to the board about the minutes. I don't believe there's any change. I double-checked them. They could capture everything, so we did print a copy for you in your packet, so other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Walmsley? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to Section 80 of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
And Deb? I'm, motion carries. We will be meeting in another room, and when we come back, we will continue on with our meeting. We'll be back in open session at 8:12. Our next item on our agenda is the Smart Millage presentation with Jeff White.
Good evening. Madam President, members of the Richmond School Board, it's actually appropriate to be here before you tonight in now my 33rd year serving as a community. I'm not certain where I've ever been, but only the entire school board. I also don't expect that all the people standing behind me are here to hear me talk about the Smart Millage. It's all part of the brief. I was really interested as I listened to the start of your meeting, you talked about in your mission statement, the whole idea of global community. And that's really what the Smart Millage has a lot to do with, is caring for the health and welfare of our global community. The small buses, the little community transit vehicles, you see in your community, don't benefit everybody. They weren't supposed to, and they'll never be able to. They serve a purpose, kind of like the EMS and fire department do, given that there are people in need of that, of that kind of service in our community. So let me share a little bit about what we do with that. Smarting, as you may be aware, is a large transportation entity here in Macomb County. Most people are familiar with the big buses that they see operating maybe farther south of the Richmond area. In this community, our taxpayers and throughout Macomb County pay one mil for those large buses. That one mil also supports our small bus vehicles that you see operating throughout town and throughout northern Macomb County. What we do with those small vehicles primarily is we get our seniors, our disabled, to medical care. Back in the late 90s, we came to understand at EMS that we had a number of people that needed transportation for medical care, but really didn't need an ambulance. And it was foolish to send an ambulance for that, those kind of needs. Having said that, their needs were real, and giving them a medical treatment in a non-emergency way kept our ambulances available for 911 response. And so we started using those Smart Millage dollars to provide that kind of service. We probably do a half dozen, maybe 12 rides a week when we began that service in 1999. And last year, we transported 24,000 people on those small buses. So when I say not everybody will use it, that is true. When I say a large proportion of our senior and disabled population do use it, that is true as well. As the years went on, we tried to expand the service in areas that could, in fact, benefit not only seniors and disabled, but other folks who pay that tax. Some of you are aware, we have a service now that provides transportation to the airport every day. You can get picked up at your home. You can get transported to the airport. You can get dropped off at the door of the terminal with your baggage and your family or friends. And when you return, you can call a number, and the bus will be waiting there for you to bring you back home. We thought it was a way to say to people who weren't using the service for senior and disabled transportation, you pay a mil too, and maybe there's something we can give you back. We transport a number of people to work. If you see a number of people that bag groceries and stock our shelves at the local broker store, you will notice if you're down there especially midday, the Smart Buses sitting there. They're not sitting there because the Smart Bus carries 33 bucks or grabbing groceries. They're in there because they deliver to very people that are keeping the shelves stocked and the groceries back. So we expanded into that. In the Tuesday after Labor Day, we began same-day service with a couple of our buses. And the same-day service really is our own local Uber. If you call during regular, it's only operating during regular business hours now, just because of budgetary issue. But if you call during regular business hours and just need a ride, we will come pick you up. Now, again, we kind of started that wondering what kind of response we could get. We thought maybe we could give a few people a day, probably about 12 riders a day. Right now, the people call and their car breaks down, and they still need to get to work. Or they have some medical need that just came up, and they need to get to the doctor's office, or whatever the case may be. Recently, we just used, it wasn't in this district, but to get a child to school, the parents usually drive from drop-off because the child has some disability needs, and we were able to go take care of that that morning, so the child didn't miss the day of school. So we're seeing all sorts of use of our service. This is all available at no other pocket cost. Nothing I've mentioned today costs anything to keep out of the pocket at the time of cost. It does, however, cost every Macomb County resident one mil. So I never say it's for, because in fact, it is not. And so tonight, I just come to share with you that that millage is up for renewal on the November ballot. And we, as an employee of the local unit of government, of Richmond Atlantic Township from my work, I can't tell people how to vote, whether to vote yes or no on any millage. All I can do is tell them the services that are provided, and I can tell them what does it say. What I can tell you is this. And this is, I think it's my biggest fear. I have this fear that if I don't get out and tell people what we're doing with these buses, on November 9th, they're going to wake up, and they're going to call the number, and we're going to tell them that we are not available. That right now, for the pre-scheduled kind of appointments, we're not taking any after the time limit. We just can't. There is no ultimate funding source. There are no other dollars. We are 40 days away-ish from this going away, and we're about a week away from people starting to get their absentee ballots. Now is time for people to make the decision about whether this goes forward. And I feel like as long as I've told people that, then you, and they, and all of our other citizens and voters, who I have tremendous respect for, and I will follow whatever direction they give, with regard to this particular service. But I will, will wake up the morning of the night and go, well, what do you mean that doesn't exist then? What do you mean I have to take mom to dialysis this morning? I've got to be at work this afternoon. What do you mean I have to take my son to Kroger to work because he's partially blocked? I feel that people are going to wake up and find out that morning that this isn't available. And I feel like I have an obligation to share with the community that this will go away that way, that I don't have magic fix for it that comes the morning of the night. I will tell you that, you know, people hear all sorts of good and bad things about Smart Buses, the large entity. It's a very big bureaucracy. Bureaucracies are inherently imperfect. I work in one. My agency over the years has become a bureaucracy. Our school districts are bureaucracies, our local townships are bureaucracies. They are imperfect, but they are the best thing we have at this point in time. If you want to have discussions about fixing a bureaucracy, whether that's smart or any bureaucracy, it's very hard to have those discussions 40 days before somebody big boss will go away. And so, you know, we are hopeful that people will understand that, and that they will vote accordingly, always regarded how they feel about all these kinds of services. With that, I don't have anything else, but I just thank you for your time. Appreciate the opportunity.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Walmsley?
Did you say that even St. Clair County or just Macomb County?
Right. It's only in Macomb County. St. Clair County does a very similar service. It's called Blue Water Transportation. They are excellent, by the way. And they do a great job. And when people call out of St. Clair County, they do, we provide their number information and try to help people schedule those kind of rides. There's a, there's a cap. We have had technical, because of our proximity to the St. Clair County border, that have actually, because of, you know, it just works out better for them, that they'd be able to get somebody to our building on 32 Mile Road in Richmond here, and we can then transport them, because now they're in Macomb County. Or we've had actually some St. Clair County residents, kind of time with our airport service, come and park their car in our large parking lot there, and we've taken them for the airport.
Do you know if St. Clair County is having a millage at this time?
Their millage is not the same time. There are millages reported, but I do not know if the water transportation millage is there.
So if it's voted yes on November 9th, then what does that do for the taxpayers in Macomb County?
It continues the, it continues that Smart Bus service.
What does it do as far as what they have to pay, though? Is that raising what they have to pay?
Oh, I'm sorry. Great question. So it's the same amount that they have. It actually rolled back some fractions of a bill. And when I would say fractions, it was like 9.7 or 8, I think. It's 9.5 now. So I don't want anybody to think they're getting a tax break here, but at least it didn't go up.
Right. But yeah, it won't be anything extra, because it's a renewal.
It will not be anything extra. It is a renewal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Our next item on our agenda is our 2023 budget update.
Okay, so in your board packet, you have several documents that we discussed from the last board meeting. So I'm going to go through them in the order. Talk about the finances, where we're at, and looking into the future as we talk. You know, this year, we are projected to be up. We're not going to look, because nothing's set until the final county numbers are all through. We budgeted 11 students up, so we were anticipating being up. I believe we're going to be up more than that. In the first document they have with enrollment, you see the October 2022 columns highlighted. That was the FTE numbers that we believe we will be at if everything stays the same. Now, there are some, we have IEPs in there, we have some transitions, some share, but that's about where we're at, which would be approximately, as you said the last time you asked me to give you a ballpark, I said about 50, I thought I was going to be at. We're in that ballpark. So as you look at, if we take those students and just move them up to the next grades over the next five years, again, without any anomalies or increase, just moving students up a grade next school year, taking that same number of students, assuming 120 kindergarteners and 17 in the ECSE program, we actually would be done. And you'll see, we have a couple of years where the enrollment drops, because we have some significant classes, just looking at the current 9th grade and 10th grade, you're at 137 FTEs. And when you move them up and they start graduating, if you're only bringing in 120, then you're still down. So I'd be cautious looking at future. We've had two good years, actually three years have become COVID year that we've dealt with, that we've been up. So we can make those assumptions. The next document that you have in your packet is the funding, what that impact would be. In this document, I assume from the state, and this is a big assumption, of at least a $150 increase per pupil. At some point, the amount that we have been getting the last two years is not sustainable, because all the federal dollars and all that start going away. So that's just cautionary. The third document, which I believe is before your, one of the items we talked about last time was a communications person. There you have a summary of a survey that we did by school. Part of it was started with the Metro Bureau, which is an organization we belong to that helps us gather statistics on what districts are doing, as well as we actually cold-called various districts. Some we got responses to, some we were waiting to see, do they have a communications person?
Right.
Yes.
So those districts that used a third party, like the one district, $1,500 a month, that's, that's what the contract is with it?
Right. So if you take that $1,500 times in 12 months, that's what they, that would be. Sometimes the third party are with actual corporations. Sometimes the third party are individuals who have created their own LLCs or corporations that they, they contract with. Some are district, perhaps the hired employees.
What?
And you, I'm sorry, usually on the third party, at least particularly the one nearest to us with that $1,500, there's a set number of hours they have budgeted each month. So it's typically enough hours to maybe put a communicator out, some type of newsletter out to the community, what it takes to print, publish, and distribute. It might be a couple of other things, but that's, it's very limited in scope, any of that.
Then the other districts that actually have full-time and these hours and that, what, what does that look like? What are their, what are their jobs? If the third party is strictly a communicator-type thing, what are, do we get what the responsibility, what the idea is for?
Many of them, it is they, they put together not only a newsletter marketing tool to address families that do not have students in our district, which is a large portion of our population, our residents, but they also address social media advertising. They might do hiring fairs and coordinating that. They manage social media accounts, district websites, to make sure they are up to date. Currently, that social media district website building is all done by individuals throughout our organization. It might be the building principal, it might be the, we have a website, social media at each building to try to promote positive things on our social media. Oftentimes, they're the ones that respond to news media, or if there's a knock on wood, they have to do interviews on them, and sometimes they would be the one that does that. Currently, that, that particular one is falls under being fully charged immediately.
I have a question. I was going through my board packet from before, and Pam Daly, wasn't that part of her district?
Pam Daly's role, her role as a communications liaison at Power School, she was our first point person for registration and new families coming into the district. So oftentimes, she would get information, whether it was from the chamber, or the city, or, you know, different organizations about kids' activities, and she would be the relayer of that to new families coming into the district. So that, she was a piece of that, that overall.
So that's no longer her?
No, she still does it. She, with new families, there's oftentimes, she has rags in her outfit, like we'll have families that, hey, my son's interested in soccer. So she'll give information, whether if they're younger on the AYSO league, or cheerleader football, tackle, or Little League. We take the summer camps that the city puts out, she'll keep that so parents call. She can be that liaison, too, or at least point them in the right direction. The Richmond Lions did a phenomenal job. They have like a poster, and one of the ladies was here last time, she's back there. We have that posted, so if families come in, need assistance, we reference those numbers and provide that to families. So it's more of a contact of resources. Or if they call and they just need, who do I talk to in the organization, because they don't, they might be new and don't know, she helps guide them in the direction. That's her, that's her. The second set was, the question came up, but what would it cost to looking at contracts and extending them out? So I'll be honest to say, I probably hit 98% of the organization here in our short time that we had. So the first set you have is custodians. If I assume what we typically give raises, you'll see on the first column in green is what we currently pay and the open positions we have, what we're planning on. And then the next, the blue, it follows the same code and color, goes the blue, yellow, gray, and pink forward, you see projected salary. That means it's not been approved, it's not a contract that they would have, but it's if we continue the same pattern. So for custodians, you'll see that it would be, if we continue the same pattern, it'd be $22,000 increase, another $22,7, $29, 34 over five years. I also talked about over five years of this contract, if we gave them what we typically give them, it'd be a cost to the district when you include FIC at retirement, for approximately $92,000 of an increased cost. The next group is early childhood center, which encompasses childcare, preschool, GSRP, et cetera. Again, you'll see all of theirs is projected. They typically have a year-to-year contract. You'll see where their current hourly rates are. And again, if you look over the four years, four additional years outside of this year, their total cost of the contract is another $102,000 increase when they have FIC at retirement. And just, just so the board recognize, and they'd be listening, the projected increases that we have aren't even at the inflationary increases we're dealing with now. Food service, you'll see the first top part, they have a, two more years on their contract. So in the green and blue, you'll see the salary and projected cost. And then you'll see projected salaries, which is in the last three years. If we followed what their current contract did and continued that, you'd be totaling approximately $21,000 increase. The bottom chart talks about if you wanted to open the contract and negotiate higher wages, and again, I chose an arbitrary number and then built that forward, you can see that would be a significant amount of money in there. You'll see the difference, the bottom yellow line is the difference between the two, so if you wanted the increase. But if you just followed their current contract and extended it, we're talking about $20,000 over the course. Again, you're significantly less number of employees when you compare to the other ones. The next set is non-union. These are central office, one shades, building COVID aids, it might be IT in there, et cetera. Again, their current salaries, if you project it out, again, consistent with what we've done with other groups, you're about $100,000 over the life of the five years of additional Paraprofessionals, which includes media center, special education, Title I, our culinary paraprofessional, and our language support. Again, they currently have a three-year contract, so you'll see in green, blue, and yellow what the cost of their contract is over the next three years. And then if you continue that same trajectory of what we gave them in the first three years, the total cost would be, I believe that's, 39,000 for the next three years. Next group is the administrator group. They currently have a contract for this year and through 24, 23, 24. A little different to project theirs out. If you looked at the 24, 25, 25, and 26, and 26, 27 school year, it did somewhat of a combination of what they had in the past and some of the conversation that has occurred to make that assumption. You can see just going into next year, you're at a $25,000 increase. And if you continue that over the course of the next four years, you'd be about $100,000 increase in FIC at retirement. None of these costs have anything to do with healthcare. We have not even addressed any healthcare increases over the course. The next group, you will see every line item for teachers. Again, teachers have a contract through 24, 25, so projecting the 25, 26, and the 26, 27 school year, which would be similar to what they have currently, what they're getting each year. Over the course of that five-year contract, you'll see that totals $744,000. It's approximately $180,000 into next year, almost $200,000 if you extend it to that third year of their contract, when you look at total costs, there's people moving on steps, et cetera. Next group is secretaries. You'll see, of the eight secretaries, you can see they currently have a contract through 24, 25, and that's where their current hourly rates are. If you extend it in the last two years to get out to 26, 27, you're dealing with 28, roughly $28,000. Transportation is the last group. They again have a year-to-year contract, so if we extend them, what they currently are running, and I rounded their hours per day to four hours, there are some that are 3.62, some that are 4.28, depending on their routes. But you can see extending that out over the course of five years is a little $50,000 cost. So that gives you a projection of each of the groups, if we wanted to, what our contractual obligations are each year based on the contract, they currently settle, and if we wanted to settle a similar contract in the future, as of now, a snapshot in time of who's working, where they are at steps, that's will be the total. The next document, which is B6, which is, we referenced bonuses for employees at our last meeting. We talked about what if we did anything over what we budgeted to try to incentivize or giving certain employees, you know, something to retain them here. So the first one is if you look at across the board, a 1%, and the 1% for hourly employees was based on what we projected their schedule to be. A 1% total, if you add FIC at retirement to the organization, is $104,000. A 1% total, if you add FIC at retirement to the organization, is $104,650. And that takes out, it doesn't include Schedule Bs, which are your, which is salary for employees. Just for a dollar figure, if you wanted to do something as a flat rate, we currently have 229 employees that are turning to this snapshot. $100 per employee, when you add FIC down to that, you're talking about approximately $25,000 for every $100 you issue for. The next, we used a format back in the spring. I had Preston, who I know, I believe is here, right there, go back, look at, work with the coaches. There's a column to the right of '22, '23, needs identified by sport. So when you look at, I'll just use for an example, it's the header at the top, baseball, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, et cetera. When you add up all of those, or the equipment need district-wide, we're approximately $58,000, $59,000. Uniform needs for the '22, '23 school year is approximately $47,000, $48,000. Again, that first page is a summary of all the pages.
Oh, okay.
If you want to look at each individual sport, each sport after that, you can see what was identified for each sport. Preston, did I miss anything, just in general on those?
The, the other one that is the regular season tournament fees, that was the other big one that we've been talking with coaches about, is, because a lot of those are what teams use to get to their, close to their MHSA regular season limits. If we wanted to adjust our league schedule for a lot of these sports, I know for track, if we wanted the league schedule, we'd have four leagues total. So a lot of those sports rely on those regular season tournaments to get our kids to where they need to participate, the numbers they need to participate in.
So when you total up all those sports, you're dealing just in tournament fees, approximately $12,000, when you look at the summary?
Are they paying for those?
Pardon? We have, we have some that we pay out of the general fund, and there are some sports that fundraiser pays for.
Got it. Thank you.
The, most of the equipment and all of the uniforms, Preston's wrong, we don't provide any uniforms.
Nope.
It's all, and there is some equipment that we have purchased, but the majority of it is fundraised by the team.
Yes. A lot of those, those bigger pieces of equipment, like for volleyball, the stanchions, and the official stands, for wrestling, the mats, a lot of that is stuff that we already have, so they're in that left-hand portion of it.
They're in the equipment to run the sport, but they're not in the needs column. Yes, we distinguish that. So there's a pitching machine that baseball uses, still operational, it's not in the needs column, but it's in the cost for the sport.
Thank you. I needed that clarification. So for the, the sports that fundraise for their tournament fees, what sports are those?
Well, I know we've paid wrestling, wrestling has paid some of theirs.
Who, what people, who, who fundraises, was my question, to go to, to pay for their tournament fees.
Who fundraises for tournaments?
He said there are sports that pay, fundraise to pay their tournament.
I can pull that and get that to you, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, because that's.
But there are some sports that I know, I know volleyball's been one, I know.
Volleyball's been one what?
That has paid, and the district has paid some, and they've fundraised to pay for some.
Okay.
I'm just taking it from the history, wrestling was some.
Okay. But that's, that falls into my question that I've asked for almost two years. It's the whole fundraising point. So if we have sports who are fundraising to go to tournaments that are needed in their season, I want to know, I want the breakdown, please.
But the total, the total that is on this document that Brian who provided us, the fees, that's the total fees, or sorry, $12,600, that's for every team?
That's. The tournaments.
That's if, if the district paid every tournament fee for every sport.
Correct.
And that's, that's an estimate of where we're usually at.
Right.
Per sport, per, like, there's some years where tennis goes to more, we kind of went with an average of what we.
Okay, sure.
But if we wanted to pay for every tournament, that's about the ballpark we're looking at.
I don't know if I would need to break down as much as we just paid all the tournaments. And that's just, you know, one of my thoughts.
Yeah, right. But if we decide that we, if we're talking about what we're going to do financially, we have all these things that we're looking at.
Right.
If I, what sports are paying for their own tournaments? I think that is something that we should know when we get down to, right, what we're talking about, what we think we can put into a line item and what we can't.
So we already then do have some money budgeted for tournaments?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
There's a line item in the.
So we would let, we would obviously minus that from this $12,600, if we were looking to cover all tournaments.
Correct. And so if we were looking at, if there's $6,000 in that line item, and it costs $12,000, we're increasing that.
Right.
It's $10,100.
Okay.
It's $10,100.
Pardon?
It's $10,100.
$10,000, thank you.
Thank you. That's what we pay right now?
That's currently what's budgeted for.
Okay. Thank you.
So with athletics, so there's several pages, but if you just look at that first page, that's a summary of all the pages in that Excel document. The next one.
Wait, wait, not done. Then where's the answer to the questions about the fundraising for all the sports?
How much they fundraise? Preston's drawing a blank.
My question is, and has been, what are we doing, what are we asking our parents in sports to fundraise? What's the dollar figure?
For each sport, I'm wondering?
Yes, and that's where this comes into, that's where the whole thing of, what does it cost to run each sport? So what have, we have so much fundraising that's going on, and that the parents are being told different things on what they're fundraising for. So my question has always been, what's, how much money is being fundraised? What's it being used for? And then what's our responsibility? What's our responsibility is what this is, right here.
So I would answer that question, that if you're looking at this current school year, our goal is not to have fundraising, then we need 56,000 under equipment, 47 under uniforms, and to make sure our tournament fees are at least 11,800. There's some other miscellaneous others items to total, that we can say we will provide everything for that sport, from uniforms, equipment, et cetera.
Well, and, because didn't we have the conversation that we want to, you know, like, quite frankly, I think that a necessity for a sport is a uniform. And yet, we do all this fundraising for uniforms. So we had the conversation, I don't know if it was last school year, June, about how much does, how much does each sport need for a uniform? What's the dollar amount? And then one year basketball gets it, next year wrestling gets it, you know, we talked about the rotation. That's the kind of information that I think we need.
If you want to, if you want to buy uniforms, then that's the dollar value that we need to put in uniform, and then take that dollar value, work with the sports, that this is their year to get uniform.
Okay.
That's what we have to work with. The challenge that we will face, and I'm saying it's, it can't be overcome, is you've got the basic uniform, and you've got what people want Richmond to look like on.
But again, if, if we're representing that, that a uniform to put an athlete out in any sport is a necessity, and if we say this dollar amount goes, that's what that coach has to spend that particular year. If they choose that they want the better, whatever, that, that's, but then that has to be made clear to parents, that you're not fundraising for your child's uniform. There is a dollar amount, that's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
That would be where we're at in that number, for the 2022 school year.
Okay.
Is there, is that number, and if it would be a better uniform or something? Like sometimes there are, you know, you have home and away jerseys, some school districts are buying one jersey that you flip inside and out for your home and away, for defending the sport. Now, if they still want the home and away, the two, that may be considered a number. So that would be our next step, is if they're, if we're going to allocate the dollars, then we need to say, okay, based on this, and what every sport has reported, this is what we would allocate for uniforms.
And so then, on this very first page, student-athlete responsibility, there's nothing in here. So we're saying that we're looking towards, there's nothing that is the student-athlete's responsibility. That's what we're looking at.
Just to assume that, that when you're playing baseball, we have a certain bat, we've got a set of golf clubs.
And we have, we have our, we have our golf coach who says that he needs, that he needs golf clubs?
Pardon? I didn't get it.
Our, our golf coach, that the necessity is.
Golf clubs.
Golf clubs?
I think that's a little.
I would probably say, look at that sheet, we did not put that down there, because every student usually likes their own golf.
He has down, Margaret, golf there?
I know what he's got down. I'm just saying, we, if we're saying that, if we're saying equipment for golf is golf clubs, but that's not what it is, because that's not what's on this paperwork.
But we're not saying it is. Golf clubs.
Let me just.
Because golf clubs could be, maybe get them for your.
Sometimes you just need one specific, special, and they might have one that the whole team uses as a search driver or something, or whatever.
Okay. Margaret, is there anything else you want to ask of, anybody else on the athletic piece?
I, I do have a question. So if we made a decision to do it all, it would be the needs columns added up to do it all?
The needs column is because of.
To get it started, yes.
To get it started, that would be the budget that we put in place for this year.
Okay.
And then what would happen in the budget process is there may be some cycles that we may be going down, or we may have to go up, depending on how many teams need uniforms two or three years on. In the sheet that we asked each coach to provide, it shared some uniforms that are good for three years, some are good for four to five years. So there could be some ups and downs, but that would be the starting point for this year.
Thank you.
The pages following the athletics, deal with transportation. Some of the conversation at the last board meeting was to look at a two-tiered busing system. What a two-tiered busing system would mean was that we would go around and pick up high school, middle school students first, once dropping them off, then we go around, pick up elementary. That has some pluses and minuses for families, as we talked about at the last board meeting. And then the reverse, dropping them off. Start times would be approximately 45 minutes to an hour difference in start times of our two schools, in order for our buses to drop students off, go back out, pick them up from our furthest point in the district, and come back. That would be challenged. So if you just took, just for the sake of not even looking at transport, I didn't even get into the gas, the maintenance on the bus, et cetera, but just on a, on a payroll side, you can see the top column shows the total cost of transportation is about 500, 624,000. Two-tiered, you're almost 906,000, when you look at doubling wages and so forth, which is approximately $300,000 increase just in payroll costs. That does not include healthcare for those that would now be eligible for healthcare because they're considered a full-time employee, averaging 30 hours of each year, which would be approximately, for the offered single subscriber, it's approximately $8,000 per employee. And then you have to look into the top of that, trend gas, we're basically doubling our fuel cost, and we did already increase it in the budget, anticipating larger, higher fuel prices this year than what we were experiencing at the beginning of last year. And then the maintenance, if you're driving double the miles, you're going to need oil changes more often, tires change more often, et cetera. This just is payroll costs and that.
And didn't we talk about the fact that this was kind of just informational, because, right, because of teacher contract, all of that kind of stuff?
There is the domino fact that would have to take, there are other contracts, when you look at start and end times of the day, that we'd have to negotiate and agree upon in order to do a two-tier. Now, we are always looking for bus drivers, we have openings for bus drivers, if anybody out there would like to be a bus driver. We are one of the highest rates in the northern Coleman County. What better way to start your day than 65 smiling kids excited to see you in the morning, or maybe in the afternoon when they want to go home? So we are taking applications, that's why we're going. One of the questions was school of choice, riders on buses, you can see the breakdown on the buses we offer. Unlike other districts, we actually go into other districts and pick up their school of choice, because we don't do that. We offer, I believe, six spots around the district. If you can get your child there, it's on our route, we'll pick them up, bring them in. You can see that we have 15 in the morning, of those 15, four of them are our drivers' kids, and then we have more in the afternoon, again, four of them are our drivers' kids who ride the buses, who do not live in the district, but send their kids here for school of choice.
Have we had any luck with, since our last meeting, with hiring any bus drivers?
No.
Okay.
Was there something on adding the additional bus, if we can find another bus driver?
If we add, if you look at that, that transportation sheet, you basically look at the open position at the bottom, if we add a driver, when you look at, basically it's a four-hour day route, at their hourly rate, you know, it's, when you look at FIC at retirement, it's, it's, I mean, it's, I'm talking about $25,000, now that, just to add a driver, which is a lot cheaper than.
The two-tier.
Two-tier. And then we do have buses that we could run, and we can find the driver. Our issue is finding the drivers.
We, we kind of said that we, that would, that was something, we would be interested in, all of us said it, right? If we could get the drive, right? We just need a driver.
And our staffing, you know, is we have enough drivers to run every run, plus one more, plus the drive, the dispatch, and plus the director who we share with New Haven. So we always have a driver on site if someone calls in, it's sick, or if we need to do runs during the day, or we allow to do more after-school sporting runs, that's been a The next set of documents, and I apologize, it wasn't in the original update, but you should have it in your packet, it's revised, is the art and choir budgets. This is the stuff that we talked about when I asked them in the spring regarding their costs. You can see the breakdown at the time for Lee Elementary School, to increase their budgets, fourth and fifth grade, because the K5 is one art program. And then you'll see in there the middle school art costs, we increased those, which are nominal in the big scope of things. And then you'll see at the high school level, the cost for art programs there. You'll also see in that packet, the '22, '23 choir quotes, what they did, when you look at, what they look at risers, our risers are getting old and will eventually need to be replaced. That's a significant amount, but when you look at uniforms, it's approximately $200 per choir uniform. Tuxedos currently are over 10 years old, dresses are about five years old, so we could be phasing them or doing it all at once. There is alterations in cleaning per student after they're done, send them out to dry cleaners. And those are costs that we could easily put into the budget without significantly impacting. The accompanists, we did already put in the budget, there is a line item for accompanists already that we pay for in the budget. Piano tuning and maintenance, there is already a line item for instrument repairs, which would fall under that. So some of these are number eight, number nine on that choir, we do accommodate for some of that. Our pianos are getting old, and need to be looked at being replaced in the next couple You see on the next page, there's some guitar quotes, you know, we purchased guitars, probably been five years ago now, we started a guitar course, over time, those guitars do wear out, strings. Again, the current cost, there's not a line item for guitar repairs, it's in the instrument repair budget line item. And then you'll see the proposed budget, what they would be looking for. And then you'll see the proposed budget, what they will be looking for in the high school and middle school instrument repair replacement. We purchased instruments in the 2014 bond, and we have purchased some since then, but over time, with the amount of kids that use the instruments, we, our instrument replacement budget, it seems to be like in line with what we're doing with turf, computers, laptops, et cetera, over time, to be replacing that. So that would be one large investment. So based on the last board meeting, I believe we have pay increases for current employees and projecting out athletic budgets roughly for sports. There's some, what would sports pay for their own, we have to be defined if we went down that road. A communications director, bonuses, I use bonuses loosely, some type of incentive for employees to retain them and keep them for over what we budgeted for with the number of students. I know at the last meeting, there in public comment, there was a comment made about adding supply budgets for each building for grade-level teachers. We currently do have, by grade level at the elementary school, a supply budget for grade level. It's used the approximately dollar value that was mentioned to us last time. There's a supply budget, and we look at the middle school, which is from 112, by content area. And you also have supply budgets in a high school, which is 113. So for instance, like photography, one and two, already have a $2,500 budget. The art department has a $4,000 budget. Science has a $4,000 budget already. So these are line items that fall under the personnel, but are for the specific departments in their building. Is everything on my checklist? Counselor, we talked last time, the rough one, you're going to need to add one or two of you on a goal to have a counselor speaking to students that often. We would easily add at least one counselor.
Well, we have a poster for counselor.
We have a counselor position posted, and I don't believe we have any...
Would we need to add one besides the one that's posted? Is that what you're saying? Or would we be able to fill that need, I think it's a need, with the position that's currently posted?
If we're looking at taking that current position, which was to create some of the overflow to address elementary, then you would need one in addition to that, to that number.
Okay. And this one that, we have the position posted for, that's already built into the budget?
Correct. It was built into the 30-year...
Okay. So we would be looking to add an additional one and adding an additional salary and whatnot to the budget? To do...
Yeah, so you've got to remember, over the last couple of years, just to keep in mind, we took, we have two FTEs for counselors. One of those, several years ago, we built into grant funds. And each year, we've been slowly bringing them back to general funds, so when the grant funds run out, we now have two back in general fund.
Okay.
So at this point, I believe it's 75, 25 percent. I'm going by memory, so it could be, but at least 75 percent general fund, 25 percent grant.
So because we already have one that we're looking for to be built into the budget, which I'm not looking at that right now, do you have an idea, like, so we have an idea then how much it would be to add an additional counselor?
When you look at, when you're adding additional counselor, which is usually a master's degree level, assuming full family benefits per the contract, FIC retirement, I'd hear between $80 and $100 a dollar, depending on where it's placed with experience. If you have someone who's coming with experience that is placed not as step one, it would be a little higher, but I think that's...
Okay.
$80,000 is our average number that we use for teacher position, while we are bringing people in, because we know some are going to be higher and lower on the total FIC retirement We have to assume they're going to take healthcare, but they may not, they may get it through their self-organization.
Sure, right, right. So this conversation still continues because we don't know what our numbers are. Some won't know that, right?
And when will we have that figured?
Our comp date is next week, but we won't know the official certified results until probably November-ish.
Yeah, it's around the seventh.
It's a really good idea, but we submit all comp date numbers at the end of October. There's always that audit and nuances come in.
So in November, we need to make sure in our agenda, we have a conversation of, okay, where are we going to spend what we have access?
Were we going to say what is now the time to talk about what, you know, how we rank them, or is that, we're going to just continue the conversation?
I can keep this on the agenda each meeting, if we want to work our way up there and get more as things evolve.
Well, we'll want to, okay, make our next meeting, we'll just have another, you know, update on this, and we'll talk about it at that meeting. So take the paperwork home that Brian's given us, we've heard an explanation, go through and prioritize what you would like to see.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of numbers we've been tossing around here tonight, and I need to go back and look at a few.
Okay.
So be prepared at the next meeting to have that discussion.
Okay.
Sound good?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Mr. Wamsley, say something.
And I would just leave you with this. Richmond is not unusual, but every district, just like in the private sector, is, the expression of Robin Teeter, "Pay Paul off a dime." And districts are basically taking employees from each other, and we're just shuffling employees. The reality is, we have a huge shortage of teachers. We have currently a high school math and a high school science, knock on my wood, science will be filled next Tuesday. High school math, we have no applicants. We have tried multiple, we have tried being creative and finding people in the industry who have a master's education, working with them to try to get their teaching certificate. The applicants are, they're not coming in like they used to. And part of that is, there are fewer and fewer people electing to go into education. Colleges are reporting half the students they enrolled even just five or 10 years ago, and some colleges have actually closed their teacher education program. I'm going to be honest, if the board's willing to do it, there are some neighboring districts that are sending teams out of state and going to recruit affairs out of state. That's a huge cost and investment in the gamble, but that is an option that we may need to start looking at, pulling teachers to come to Michigan, a lot of other states.
Do you think Michigan will ever do it themselves, coming out of our...
It will take a cycle here. And you've got a perception of people who are entering college right now and what they want to go into. And when you look at just graduation, where people are going, fewer and fewer high school kids are electing to go into college. Our hope with our teacher cadet program is to start turning our mindset around the eastern art community and trying to find those that really are going into it for the passion of what it is, to educate students.
I have a question for you. I know it's math and science, and I'm sure you, is there ever any CTE kind of program certification for any of those? In that sense, like we do for our career tech?
We have. We've been very creative. In fact, our high school CT computer course that we're offering this year, we went through the annual certification, that person doesn't have the actual teaching credential, but she qualifies because she has the years of experience. The teacher cadet program, that teacher doesn't have the official certification of teacher cadet, but they have the years of experience, so we went through another path, what we call the alternate for the annual authorization. So we're looking, well, we have teachers who we've worked with who hashtag teach, they have the degree, they pass the basic sales, they just haven't done the student teaching part. We've worked with them on that angle, just to get people. But like I said, math, you get one candidate that applied, I'm going by memory. We've looked at other things, like is it possible to hire, oh, just do a hypothetical, maybe we have someone in the PE department that could go to science, and let's hire a new PE teacher and reassign people. Maybe we can get three counselors. I have a counselor who's got an English certification, so I move that counselor into English and hire a counselor. So we have looked at all options, what our current teacher certifications are. The challenge with that is when you put someone in an area they just aren't passionate for, it doesn't come out. I know our teachers are great, but I want to keep them, I'm trying to keep them in where they're passionate and what they love, to keep them.
What about the substitute teachers? Have we tried to hire them as our counselors?
We have done substitute teachers that we've put on a, what's the annual permit? Daily substitute. Daily substitute permit, we've done that. The challenge with substitutes is you don't always have the ones, especially at the higher level, the content knowledge that they need. They might be great with kids and manage them, but when you get the content now. So what we've done is we've paired them up with our existing teachers, who do the lesson plans and kind of teach them what to teach on a daily, and so, and we're paying those teachers now, but it's still a lot of work on there.
Can we help those substitute teachers, like in our teacher cadet program in some way, to reach certification, to be a certified teacher?
Ms. Staples actually applied for, they had to use your name for the first time, you married me, so congratulations. Has actually, she applied last year, Grow Your Own. We did not get the grant, but that's what we're hoping. We're identifying individuals within our organization that we can help pay for and grow their own. The governor's budget allows for about, I think it's about $9,000 a semester for a student teacher to get paid for, but that's all still up in the financing for them to work out how that's going to funnel to the actual student. They figure they got a whole year or half a year at least, but they're making any money while they're student teaching.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. So make sure you're ready for the next meeting on your prior attempts. Mr. Wamsley, bad update.
Just short, we've been working on finishing the summer projects. The fencing went in, the grass went in for the new varsity softball field. The dugouts, as I said at the last board meeting, are now being built on the old varsity field, which will become the new JV softball field. We're just moving forward. After the first of the year, you will get the bid packages for next summer's paving project, so it will be coming, so it will be coming in the next couple of board meetings. It'll be yours sooner than that, and I have no other bad update.
Okay, thank you. Our next section is public comments. I always provide an update on any emails that I've received since our last board meeting. I had four from our community. One was requesting information on the principal candidates. One was asking about some language that was expressed in our kindergarten classes. Another one was sharing concerns about our safety in our bathrooms, and another one was sharing a concern about a board member. All of these have been directed to the appropriate people to be handled. Most of them usually go to Mr. Wamsley. At this time, it's public comments. Any member of the public may address the board at this time. Please sign in. There's a sign-in sheet up at the podium and state your names. You have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments?
My head. Okay, thank you. (pause) 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 Just to name a few, the health of our students regarding sexual abuse in our bathrooms, that could happen. Are we now going to use urinals in our female bathrooms to accommodate the 1% to 2%? What about social media and the world of pictures and cell phones from students? Are we going to have to worry about one of our kids' private part being blasted all over the internet? We kind of need and deserve the answers in order to keep our kids safe, so we're back here again. I kind of just want us to be heard with a transparency, so I will be filing a Freedom of Information Act also regarding this.
My name is Reverend Kim Newport, and I'm the co-pastor of Rise United Church of Christ. I'm the moderator of the Eastern Association of the United Church of Christ, which covers this geographic area. I'm a member of the Northern McComb County Chapter of the NAACP. I hold a bachelor's of science degree in religion and psychology and a master's of divinity. I am also a non-binary lesbian. My job is difficult because way too often I receive emails from youth in this area who are so tired of being bullied and marginalized that they feel as if they have nowhere to turn. School is not a safe place where they are able to be who they are and accepted. It is a place of despair for many who are reaching out to me. I am also tired of officiating funerals for youth who can no longer hold on to hope that tomorrow will be better. They feel they can no longer keep fighting. Make no mistake that this is a life-or-death topic that goes much deeper than which restroom is used. Liberty is defined as, quote, "the state of being free within society from oppressive restrictions imposed by authority on one's way of life, behavior, or political views." The definition is very similar to what the majority of our world religions teach. Judge not, love one another, be compassionate and caring. We are called to teach our children these attributes. If they hear us degrading others, they will mimic what they see and hear. That is unacceptable. We took a moment of silence tonight for a student who tragically died of cancer. Please make decisions for LGBTQ+ youth that will ensure your next moment of silence is not for one of them. And by the way, I did go ahead and use the men's restroom tonight while I was here, and I am pretty sure that everyone was perfectly safe with my presence.
I am Reverend Tracy Marta. I am a resident of this school district. I am a graduate of this school district. I am a former educator in this school district. I am a former Board of Education member. And I am standing here also as a religious leader in Northern McComb County. I am the other. I am the co-pastor along the chil of Rise United Church of Christ. And I am asking for this board, and I am calling upon this entire community to lead with love and justice and to uphold the nondiscrimination clause that is printed on your agenda. And to not have it just be printed, but to actually be lived out. That you act for all students, not just the ones who maybe look like or act like the ones that you know and love best, but that you consider the safety for all students, and particularly those who are bullied and oppressed regularly. Because those are the ones who in stories that I declare to be holy are the least of these. They are the ones who we are supposed to think of first. And in these times, they are members of the LGBTQ+ community, particularly transgender students, who right now, because it seems like the loudest voices, and I hope and pray they are the minority, they are calling these people names consistently. They are calling members of the transgender community out with horrible volumes of hate, and they are spewing falsehoods over and over again. I expect that you be keepers, keepers of the justice, and keepers and holders of compassion, and allow for dignity and respect for all humans, all humans, to walk the hallways of all of these schools alongside all of the humanity, all of the varieties of people, so that they all, everyone here, can not just simply survive, but thrive here at Richmond Community Schools.
I've been up here before. I wasn't exactly planning on speaking today, but something suddenly spoke to me, and I felt like I needed to. I have two sons, so honestly, the whole girl-boy thing, they're in middle school, it doesn't really super apply to me at this point. But in our house, we teach inclusion. We never exclude somebody. I don't care what color you are, what race you are, what you identify as, or something like that. But on the same token as that, I think we need to protect our children and their rights. This is directly from the United Nations Human Rights webpage. Gender equality is at the very heart of human rights and United Nations values. Gender-based discrimination is prohibited under almost every human rights treaty. Despite most progress made in securing women's rights globally, millions of women and girls continue to experience discrimination and violence, being denied of their equality, dignity, and autonomy, and even a life. This discrimination and violence against women and girls, deeply rooted in the fabrics of society, is persistent and systematic. And in recent years, there has been a recurrence of sex skepticism against the denial of international standards concerning women's human rights, gender equality, and gender-based violence. When I read this, a girl should be comfortable going to a women's restroom. I don't have a problem having different restrooms. I don't care if you build 15 restrooms in the hall, and each one has its individually locked door. I don't care who uses each one. But if two girls or one girl goes into a bathroom on her, in the middle of class or whatever, to do what she has to do, she shouldn't be worried that somebody of another gender could come in and make her uncomfortable. Women have fought for decades to secure our rights, just like blacks didn't want to be segregated. Women wanted to have their place and our own safe space. Taking that away from these young, impressionable girls by allowing a biological male to enter her bathroom while she's there is just wrong in my eyes. I'm sorry. Like I said, get individually locked doors. That's totally fine. I don't care who pees where, or if you sit or if you stand. We promote women's and girls' equal enjoyment of all human rights, including freedom from violence, sexual and reproductive rights, access to justice, social, economical equality, and participation in decision-making.
My name is Cynthia Thornton. I'm the president of Pride at Work Michigan, which is an LGBT organization and a labor union organization. I am a visitor to your fair city, but not the visitor to Michigan. As an Army brat, I've lived in a lot of places, but Michigan is what I call home. I came tonight because for the past year, I have been so proud of the students who have taken it upon themselves to say enough is enough. They recognize when their fellow students were being discriminated against, sometimes physically assaulted, and that schools were not responsive to that. And I'm talking about racial discrimination. I'm talking about LGBT discrimination, and particularly trans discrimination. It's perfectly understandable that people don't get it. I went to school K through 12 in Lutheran school. Trust me, trans was not on the agenda, nor was sexual orientation, nor gender identity, nor anything that did not involve what we understood at that time to define males and females, basically your genitalia. But I suggest to you, particularly for those of you who have been in the service, who have had someone who was physically injured so that they no longer could use their genitalia, that it was not your genitalia that defined their humanity, whether they were a man or a woman. So essentially, when we know better, we do better. And if we continue to perpetuate ignorance or refuse to learn because it's uncomfortable, all of us went to school, we were uncomfortable a lot. Whenever we learned something new, we were uncomfortable. But as we get older and we recognize that discomfort equals learning, hopefully we accept that, and we are able to move forward, not comfortably, but openly. When you're talking about the safety of children that we always claim is so important to us, our most important, the future, et cetera, we don't exclude LGBT kids. They're still kids. You don't have to get it, but you should try to understand it. And as teachers, you have that obligation, as education professionals, as the board. For the parents who don't get it, who are afraid, who are using, equating LGBT with sexual predators, I push back as hard as I can without being disrespectful to this body. There is nothing about being an LGBTQ person that equates with sexual assault. I'll leave it to you to do the research. You all have laptops in front of you. And when you look, you will find that pedophiles and the like, that has nothing to do with LGBT. And so when that equation is made, I would hope that our school body is going to push you back. And for those, because I am aware, I've been down to Three Rivers, I've been up to Alpena, I've been to West Bloomfield, I know the kids walked out in Brighton, I know they walked out in Holt. If the kids get it, the fear doesn't seem to come from them. The kids are defending each other. So I say the parents and the adults need to get on board. There's training all over the state. Michigan Department of Corrections, LGBTQ centers all over the state. If you don't know, you can find out, and you can pretty much find out for free. But you have to be willing, you have to be open, and you have to have love in your heart and not hate. Thank you for your time.
My name is Scott Blump, chairman, president, board. Thanks for hearing us tonight. This is a very sensitive subject, and it has nothing to do with love-hate, nothing to do with sexual predatorship. I have two daughters in the high school, and when my daughters come home and say they are afraid to use the bathroom, not afraid, they're uncomfortable, because they go to use the restroom and a male comes in because the school lets them. I don't agree with this at all. I don't know if there's other bathrooms that each group can use, males, females, transgenders, whatever it takes. Every kid should feel comfortable using a restroom. My kids come home, they got to use the bathroom because they're scared to do it in the school. They don't like to have males come in the restroom when they're using a restroom. And as a father, I agree 100%. So whatever has to happen, it has to happen, whether it's to vacation, whether it's through separate bathrooms, whatever it is, these kids need to feel comfortable using a restroom.
Any other public comments? Any other comments?
I'd first like to start off, but thank you for the opportunity for me, as a transgender person, to be allowed to reach my case and at least share some of what I go through on a daily basis.
Can you give us your name?
Oh, yes, Mercury.
Thank you.
I am a junior in Lake Orion High School, and last year, there was a day where I decided I'm going to count how many things I hear or see people say about me relating to my own sexual orientation or gender identity. The first day, I counted 17 things that were said to me or that I overheard about me explicitly with my name on it. The next day, I counted 24. And I counted the day after that, it was 28. I personally believe that it's not a matter of people sexually assaulting other people because anyone can do that. As harsh as it sounds, anybody can. It doesn't matter if you're a transgender person or not. So it sucks to see me and my community being portrayed as people that would do that. But I use the bathroom at my school in the office because it's private, it's away from other people, and it is where I feel most safe. I don't feel safe using public restrooms at my high school out of fear of discrimination, name-calling, physical violence, and other things that could possibly happen to me if I enter those bathrooms, and I experience it throughout the day. So especially in a closed space like a bathroom with no staff around, who knows what I could be subjected to as a transgender person? It's not a matter of, we simply just want to use the restroom. That's it. That's all it is. It's not a matter of really, really wanting something, and it's really not that far a fish. We simply just want to be able to use the restroom throughout the day and use the restroom that fits for us as a person. Thank you.
Can I just say something really quick? I want to make it clear to everybody that...
Wait, wait, wait. No, no. You've already had your...
I, okay, I'm sorry. Will you say my name?
She's already had three minutes. But I know, but if she gets three minutes from somebody...
She wants to... I don't know if you want me to say what you just said. She just wanted to say that, she was going to come up here and say that what she was saying about the sexual assault had nothing to do with that coming from transgender children. She was worried about students abusing the rule of, well, I'm going to pretend this so I can get into the bathroom. It had nothing to do with transgender children at all. That's not what she was saying. That's right?
Correct.
Okay. Excuse me a minute. Can I just have your name?
Amy Steyer. Amy Steyer.
Hi, my name is Wendy. I just have one quick thing to say, listening to all of this. You guys speak about budgets and sports and things like that. Perhaps you should listen to some of these people and realize there needs to be money spent on education and stopping this hate. This is not going away. This is not going away. And kids are feeling more free to come out to be who they are, and you all need to look at it, and you need to realize that this is a problem, and you need to educate parents, not just children. I think the children are a lot better off than the parents, but unfortunately, some of these parents are employing their children. And I just think you really need to think about that in your community. And that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
I'm the coymale... I'm the primarily target of a lot of this, well, targeting that's been going on. Of course, many of my fellow trans people in the school experience it on a daily basis just as me, while I, along with many other people, who only wish to see themselves integrated in the identity that they wish to hold, all routinely separated into these other categories and thrown in with sexual predators. And I'm sorry, but in my opinion, there is no reason to recite sexual predators unless you are overtly attempting to make a connection between the two. I simply do not see what importance it has in this conversation otherwise. And again, as a trans, as a trans woman, who I have walked around in the street, gone and walked before, and been called a faggot on the street, walking by, just trying to enjoy my life.
Are we talking to you just a second? You need to direct it to the board.
Yeah. I have, um...
Right.
I have been called a faggot on the street, and I hate to use such a bold terms, but it is what I have experienced, and all over me going up and peeing for 40 seconds, I don't know. All of these attacks and targeting over me just wishing to be able to be seen and integrated as any other woman is and to receive the accommodation that any other woman is given. And I remember the months and months and months of weight that took me for me to be able to access my hormones that I'm on now, to be able to change my names in the systems that I have. And the discrimination of trans people is an everyday occurrence for them. There was no concept of integration even for many of them. It's such a distant concept that is so far away because these attacks, which are thinly veiled behind protecting our children and behind making sure predators don't come in. And as a, um, I don't know, because people are saying ole, a sexual predator can be a sexual predator no matter how they're shaped, no matter what their size, it doesn't matter. There's no reason that a, you know, a lesbian in the school bathrooms couldn't do the exact same thing I could, or a straight woman couldn't. And to insinuate that I'm doing something like that when all I am doing is checking my makeup, or going pee, or blowing my nose is so absurd to me. And I just wish that the information, as again, many people in this community have already stated, that the information was more widely spread for people to understand the perspective that me and my community come from, where we just wish for acceptance and we just wish for accommodation like everyone else is for, hey? Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Any other public comments? We are going to move on. Our next agenda item is superintendent and legislative update.
Thank you. As referenced earlier by Mrs. Shannan-Boss, one of our colleagues, students, a friend of our district, Nathan, 11th grader at the high school. I also want to express my condolences to the family and friends of Nathan. I received several communications as to why the delay in my letter. I want to thank the high school administrative staff and Mrs. Board because in respecting the family and as they went through that grief process, I wanted to make sure with what we put out, they were okay. So very supportive. So with that, I do want to ensure all the parents, when we found out about the tragic death, our team came together, pulling in any resources we have, from counselors, the social workers, to the individuals that may need help getting through this difficult time. We still offer that to every family, students in all of our districts. Just as a reminder, grief doesn't always happen between eight and three during the day. And for families, I just want to remind you again, if your child's going through some difficult situations, whether it's grief or anything, this district has opted to offer a student assistance program through CARE Southeast Michigan, where we will provide and pay for up to five counseling sessions to help all families through their, whatever it is they're coping with. And so for the, I know we've had students that have reached out regarding this tragic death, so just want to remind everybody of the resources that are there. As far as legislative update, there are, there's really nothing happening in Lansing, which can be a good thing. But there are several bills that were just recently introduced that I just want to make sure everybody is aware of, and if anyone's copies of that, as always, I'd be more than happy to provide it. I have them right here, too. House Bill 6393 provides funding to eligible nonprofit organizations to contract with vendors on an approved list of vendors for firearm protection software on school property. So it is another resource provided for eligible nonprofit organizations to access state funds. House Bill 6411 amends certain requirements concerning eligibility to serve as a substitute teacher. Again, this is just a, we've been talking about the shortage of teachers, basically substitutes for years. I don't think I can recall a time ever not talking about substitute shortage, and it's only perpetuating now into the classroom. But the requirements for substitutes, there's a bill that would change that. House Bill 6405 was introduced to create an urban foresting program for all high school students to participate in. While I don't disagree with the intent of the bill, I strongly believe that the decision for what gets taught and how it gets taught needs to stay at the local level with the experts, though I understand the framework of it, so I'll be watching this one. House Bill 6418, actually, our representative, Jeff Yards, introduced that, which would recommend that the model core academic curriculum standards for health education include certain components such as tourniquet, stop the bleed, et cetera, in that course. House Bill 6378 creates future educator scholarship programs, is trying to incentivize people to go into the education field. And then House Bill, the one that actually, I'll be honest with you, all these are ones I'm watching, but if you, over the last couple of years, follow college football and amateur college athletes being, having the right to capitalize on their name, images, or likenesses. House Bill 1174 would now include high school students in that category of being able to prevent any institutions from amateur athletes earning compensation for the use of his or her name, image, or likeness, and it's now goes down to the high school level. So from the athletic realm, I'll be watching that. Couple things going on in the building at Lee Elementary School, reported by Mrs. Naguni, and thank you, Mrs. Naguni, for coming tonight. NWA has started, they are in full force. It's a assessment we use to measure our bench line data. Lee Elementary School had a great turnout in last Friday's homecoming parade. Preschool has had a remarkably busy end of the first school. There are more and more smiles and less and less tears of those preschoolers breaking the bonds with their parents, which is kudos to the staff. I do want to thank the preschool parents. They have a little different drop-off in location, but they continue to keep the bus loop free of, for buses and allowing for a very smooth transition and dismissal, arrival and dismissal. So I thank not only Mrs. Naguni and Mr. Gibson for getting that message out and for all the preschool parents. Preschool's planning their upcoming field trip to Westview Orchards on October 5th, which will be coming up very soon. Childcare, we're always looking for childcare employees. We significantly raised the rate to try to attract childcare, but just to give you a status, we average between 60 and 70 students a day in the afternoon childcare. Mrs. Blanc, our lead childcare person, is doing an excellent job organizing, managing the number of kids that are coming in each and every day. Richard Middle School, this was given to me by Mr. Bertels. Unfortunately, he was not able to be here tonight. NWA started, just as it has done at the elementary school. Middle school homecoming pep assembly was last Friday morning. Did an outstanding job. I got to see the kids as they were coming back. I didn't get to the pep assembly in time. A lot of excitement on the kids' faces. I want to thank the staff for coordinating that, with a lot of logisticals, getting kids from point A to point B in the district and being safe. Grade six through eight had outstanding professional development in Amplify, which is the new science curriculum. Mrs. Staples coordinated that, and so congratulations on that, and look forward to many others. The PTA organization is planning the Boo Bash, which is a typically annual event at the middle school. It's a great activity, a lot of, I'm sure, I can't wait to hear all the good things that are happening. At the high school, you've heard in the past, we do Manufacturing Day, which is October 6th. It is the largest in the United States, Home County's Manufacturing Day. Mrs. Zabo and Mrs. Borwick took a little twist down it this year. They, over 50 invitations are going out to students to participate. You may be asking, how are those invitations being selected? The high school administrative team, along with all the support staff, selected the students based on their educational development plan, which is a requirement by law that students start having eighth grade. So those students that were interested in the careers of engineering, research and development, product development, chemistry, automation, welding, were invited to this, participate in our Manufacturing Day experience, really targeting the students that are going to benefit the most, so I want to thank them for that. And finally, I'll end with the Devil's Den, excuse me, Devil's Den is now open, if you've seen it. If you haven't gotten your Blue Devil apparel, please check it out. And now leading with this, last week was homecoming. It was a great week, the high school levels, and the bonfire, the powerball, the spirit days, the parade, the football game. It was just a great week for rich and famous schools. And with that, that's all I have.
Can I ask you a quick question? Do we know what the Devil's Den hours are? Like, their hours of operation?
I will hit that for you. I don't know if that...
Okay, thank you.
Really, they run it between classes. I don't know.
Okay.
It used to be before school and after school.
I'll get that, too. I'll email it to you.
Thank you.
And the next part of our agenda is items from the school board. I'll start now with safety.
I do not have anything today.
Okay, thank you. Angela?
I just wanted to mention to you, board members, Board Member Cunningham and I were able to attend the MASB legislative priority meeting, setting meeting last week, and it was very interesting. I had been to one previous years, but not at the very first stage, and we all were able to break out into groups and kind of brainstorm and pick three items that we, as a group, felt that our legislation should make a priority coming this year. And then they'll be collecting all of the information and kind of doing that, I think, three to four more times. If any of you board members, you can go to one. The one that's at our local ISD has already passed, but there's some downriver. But you could go to those and also have input, and they will eventually get all the information together and narrow it down to a list that we can take a survey on, and hopefully they'll bring it to the legislators for us next year. So it was interesting. I encourage you guys to go if you can make it.
Just to echo, that becomes the priority for MASB as well as other organizations to really put your voice, what we need to focus on lobbying with our legislators. Just a reminder, we have a significant turnover in this coming November election. I don't remember what I thought, but I thought probably these half are brand-new digital positions, so there will be a lot of education on historic and why things are where they are now, where we believe they need to go with safer public education, so I'll echo that.
Thank you. Angus?
I can just echo what Angela said, and then we also have the, another meeting tomorrow night that we're going to for the, it actually has the four candidates for the state for that are up for election in November, and I'm really looking forward to going to that. So...
Good. You can record back to us, let me know what you heard.
I don't know if we get to say anything, but we'll see.
You'll vote, there'll be questions answered.
You can ask questions.
The moderator, which is really, he's a good...
It's a debate, and so what, I'm going tomorrow, too, but it's, so you have a chance to give the moderator questions. And so the questions come from those of us in the audience, and I think they have some prepared questions, too, that they do, but you will, if there is a question you want asked, you can give it, and the candidates will be asked that question.
Great.
Margaret?
I'm tied. Were you done?
Yeah.
Margaret?
No, I have nothing. Okay. I would just like to let our community know that the district does have a transgender policy. It is policy number 5106. You can locate it on our website. If you go to, under the school board, there is a, if you click it on, it'll say board policies, and all the policies are listed. So I would just really strongly encourage people to take a look at what our district policy is. Thank you.
Okay, our last item for the night, we have an action item. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of laptops from C-High Computers.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of 100 laptops from C-High Computer Products Inc. for a total not to exceed $41,500 allowable under the S-3 and authorized in the fiscal year 2023 general fund is outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have a second?
A second. It's for...
Thank you, Stephen. Any discussions?
These are the ones we need because we...
We are increasing enrollment, some that are repaired, so just so the board knows, everybody who needs a one-to-one, we moved from other grade levels, we'll be shifting them back, make sure that everybody has a one-to-one now.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, no further business. We will adjourn at 9:54.